A small animal sometimes like that, a rabbit animal, and possibly a pistol, that they have to qualify with our, with Officer Lewandowski, who's our range officer, with that firearm. Then there'd be no question that the person has demonstrated proficiency with that weapon in Mr. Lewandowski's.
It's a good idea.
Well, I think there comes to be a difference between shooting a wild animal versus somebody's pet that they're very passionate about. You know? And as far as a willingness to sue. Okay, right. Would it be your opinion that something such as that should go in this contract? Or should it be in the job description?
I think it, this contract does provide for a policies and procedures manual between the two towns, and I think it would be most efficient to be in that portion.
I will work on that.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I'll call the motion then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstain? Okay. All right, so we ratified. So 3B is a special appropriation of vehicle acquisition program of 2016-17. We're having a new fiscal year coming upon us, which means capital improvement projects and capital purchases are all starting to come up because our bonding things are coming up soon too. So, Joe, do you want to kind of go over some of these? Would that be the way to move forward on this? We have a town and then a Board of Ed technology plan. So for the town plan, we're purchasing the following equipment, which was included in the CIP: a dump truck for $160,000, recycle truck, which is $300,000, utility body pickup truck for Public Works for $58,000, patrol vehicle for the police. Remember, we're buying only one police car this year, taking down from two, which is the normal procedure, and one tractor for the park and rec to replace the tractor they have. This is, these are all, these are all items in your capital improvement plan. The five-year agreement is to pay $128,000 annually at 1.57% interest. That would pay these five items off over five years. Do we have any questions for Mr. Brigaw?
We're going to bond this, the bond will be paid off in five years. Once, for instance, using Bush Hill as an example, once this is, shall we say, reconditioned as new, what's the lifespan of that before it needs to be redone again?
We're talking to dump trucks here, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you'd gone to the roads. I'm sorry. Thinking dump truck roads. Sorry.
This is.
Just making sure I'm listening.
Well, yeah. That's usually my, my job to jump around on the agenda. So this is the equipment acquisition plan for 1617. There are five items on it, $128,000 payments over five years at 1.57% interest.
And there's four vehicles, and then the tractors, the parks and rec, and of the vehicles, all the vehicles that are coming in, there would be a vehicle lead, and we're not adding to the fleet.
That's important to me.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure the board knows that if someone comes in and something goes out, we're not, because then if you keep adding vehicles, you're adding costs and insurance and everything else.
So what, what is the disposition of the departing vehicles?
The pickup truck is a 1999 Chevy. The dump truck is a T9. It's a 2001 International Dump Truck, uh, 2001, so it's 15 years old. The police car is one of the, one of the 2010 vehicles, so it's six years old. We have one, two, we have three 2010 vehicles, and those are probably upwards over 100, 120,000. So that, so it's going to be.
So these go out to auction or scrap?
Correct.
Or, you know, I know in the past sometimes they've been moved.
They never go scrap.
Okay. Moved to other departments, but obviously this is not happening because you say we're not adding to the fleet?
Yeah. These vehicles will be coming off typically Chuck Oliphill, our highway superintendent, looks at the best time, brings it up to Petrowski's up by Franklin Way and sells them off. That money goes into the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
The only exception I'd seen to that, your, your plan that five on, five off, is a patrol vehicle. Sometimes we take those police cars and move them down to a detective, not a detective car, because they need to be unmarked, but we move them to a building.
Well, right now, on the police side, there is a very old, there's a spare car that's kind of hanging on. So the vehicle that gets replaced now will move to the spare, and the spare will go off.
Spare's got to go.
So it's, it's a one-for-one.
So it still keeps the total number the same?
The vehicle is replacing the 2000 will be.
You're just replacing one with a slight, the spare one with a slightly newer one and then get rid of the older one.
The 2010 police car will not actually leave the flight, the spare vehicle that is, because right now, if they're down a vehicle, we need a spare vehicle, and it has to have a canine capability to it, so we always have to have a spare just to keep the force the same size.
So we'll have a newer spare?
Correct.
And the older spare will go away?
The older spare will go, so there won't be, not be an addition of a vehicle. One will go, one will come in, and then they pass down the old one.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Anything else?
I have a question. Originally, we were going to do two patrol cars, and we had to cut that down because of the cuts.
Correct.
Did we also do that last year?
No.
No. We got, they got two vehicles.
They ended up getting the two?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't falling behind, too far behind.
They got an SUV and an Explorer.
Okay.
This, this vehicle will be a new Explorer. I'm, excuse me, there's an Explorer and a sedan in this, this one, and this, but it will be an Explorer.
Okay. And it's called a municipal lease purchase, but it is a purchase. It's not necessarily a lease, turn in when we're done. We own these at the end of five years. Yeah, okay.
Move the following: Whereas the Board of Selectmen has determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the vehicles and equipment described above presented at this meeting, be it resolved to approve an appropriation in the amount of $643,696.26 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase various vehicles and equipment, more particularly described in the town's fiscal year 2016-2017. Equipment acquisition, acquisition plan is evidenced by one or more agreements for the acquisition of said vehicles by lease or purchase or combination thereof, for a total price of $619,500 plus interest at the rate of 1.5% per annum payable in annual installments of $128,739.22, which is $10,728.27 a month over a period of five years. The first selectman is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver any documents that may be required in connection with said transaction and forward to the Board of Finance for approval, and this requires a town meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, it's been seconded twice, if that's possible. Any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? There you go. Thank you, Joe. The next item is the Board of Education Technology Plan. Mr. Newton, I guess, thank you for being patient. Coming up on our, the beginning of our three soon. This is the typical, this is your technology plan, which you started, the Board of Ed started five, six years ago. We're on a roll with this thing now, where we're keeping fresh technology in the hands of our future.
You're fine. Yes.
Citizens.
What's coming around, it's just a further breakdown so you have, have that in front of you. We are requesting $215,000.040, which is less than requested last year. Last year, we had included a new student information management system, which was purchased, so we no longer have that in here, but the 215.040 is broken down to $148,000, which covers replacement of laptops, desktops, and monitors, and then $67,000.040 for continued replacement and upgrading of smart boards and some of the digital equipment of that sort. So thinking what you have, what I just passed out, was a boring down of, you know, where those items are in that continued replacement process.
Questions from anyone on the board?
Is this purchase or lease?
This is purchase.
Have you looked at leasing?
Yes, I, I, it's.
I think we've got to get you on the microphone, believe it or not. Your debut. Not really. You've been there before.
Yes. Total cost of ownership is much better when you purchase.
Even bearing in mind the age, the rapidity with which the technology ages?
Yes. Yes. The trend of technology is now going back, going to the cloud, going back to mainframe for those of us who are old enough to remember that. So the hard drive, the hardware itself can be maintained longer than a lease would, would, would help. Also, swapping out for a lease is a lot more man-hours to do than, than purchasing in it and setting them up and having them set for once. Do we have a purchasing cooperative with other towns? Actually, I'm working on that now. There are several towns that have gotten together with a, in a roundtable discussion, and that was one of the topics we addressed the last time. So I am.
Because I, you know, I don't have to tell you in these days anything we can do that would create economies of scale by getting together in larger groups and really getting a keen deal on something like this.
What we do now is share back and forth the prices that, that other districts got for, for deals, and that is shared information, yes.
Well, the rest of this board knows, and I know the superintendent knows, I'm always in favor of anything that will allow us to get better prices and make our.
Better value.
Tax dollars go further. So, thank you.
That's a good point, Hallie, with that regionalization. We're looking at all areas. This is just one more.
For the record, the town is now a member of the Capital Region COG, and they do a lot of the purchasing, okay? So we weren't a member up until last year, so you know about that then. So they do some big purchases. We use them through Public Works, et cetera. So that's another resource for us. So it doesn't have to be this region, it can be statewide as well. So other questions? We can take a motion and then ask any others. Move the filing resolution. Whereas upon the recommendation of the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen has determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described above. Be it resolved to approve an appropriation to the Board of Education in the amount of $223,438.97 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase or combination thereof various new computer and smart board equipment for the high school, middle school, Nyanic Center School, Lilyby Haynes, Flanders School, Coastal Connections, and the Central Office, more particularly described in the Eastline Public Schools' proposed Year One Computer Replacement Plan 2016-2017. The total amount of $215,040 plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum payable in annual installments of $44,687.78, $3,723.98 a month over a period of five years, and sent to the Board of Finance for approval, and this requires a town meeting. Second. I have a motion, it's been seconded. Any further comment?
In that motion, I believe I heard Coastal Connections. I don't know if I heard Central Office, but on the chart, it shows those two as not receiving any technology upgrades or any computers, laptops, monitors. Should they be specifically mentioned in that motion then?
Well, then every, there's nothing slated on here for receiving computers, because they're sitting both at zero. We should go.
So what I'm saying, should they be then mentioned in the resolution?
Yeah.
It's a boilerplate motion that we use every year to put the numbers in, but do you have a comment further?
So the reason that Coastal Connections is added this year is because they're actually a number at the state. They have been, they have a separate number where they report to the state, so I felt that they needed to be included under their separate number. And I wanted to break down Central Office because I, if we do purchase equipment for Central Office, they would need to be identified. I didn't want to be indirect in not having them be identified at a school.
But you're telling us that they're not being.
Right now, they're not, and the reason is because I, I roll older equipment that I can update but are not good for, say, the one particular tech class at the high school needs higher end for CAD. When I replace the higher-end computers, I can therefore roll them into Central Office. In the, I just use the boilerplate, so in the future, if I do add them, it's, it's part of the, the overall district. Thank you.
Good question. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
This is hard to abstain. Thank you. Are you done? Do you have anything else on our agenda coming up? As my knowledge. Okay. Good evening. Special appropriation of CNRE projects, CIP, $235,000. Attaches a list of projects recommended for funding from the CNRE Fund 32. This is part of our budget, this is part of the process. Some things got cut, some things got cut in half, some things got eliminated, but the town roof project, $25,000, HVAC replacement, $10,000, sidewalk repair, $25,000, town projects, various town projects, $75,000, and the cooling tower at Eastline Community Center, we're starting a CNRE fund for $20,000 there. All of these items went through Public Works Director Brigaw, who reviewed the specific funds available for roofs, for HVAC, et cetera, for sidewalk, and felt that these were comfortable numbers to move forward. You know, we generally fund these at a higher number, but we're in tight budget times, so this is what they are. I'll answer any questions.
Is this bonded, or is this paid for directly out of the budget?
This is right out of the budget, operating budget.
Good.
And it was in your budget.
Yep. I remember it.
Move to appropriate the following projects in CNRE Fund 32, which are consistent with the 2016-17 Capital Improvement Plan and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Town roads, our town project roofs, $25,000, HVAC replacement, townwide, $10,000, sidewalk repair, townwide, $25,000, town projects, various, $75,000, replace cooling tower, Eastline Community Center, $20,000, revaluation, $80,000, and the total is $235,000. And this will require a town meeting.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. Our next is the bonding resolution for $900,000 for various town roads. This is the annual request for $900,000. We, as you know, we have a street repair, replacement, reconstruction plan in this town that was put out, I think, a long time ago by Mike G. and friends at all, and Mr. Brigaw has picked up this ball and even made it better and moved it forward. There is a list of town, of town roads that you've given me over the last couple of days, I think. If you want to kind of go over what your plans are with this money this year, it might be helpful to the Board of Selectmen.
You should already have this from the past. I figured I'd have to.
Thank you.
It kind of lumps together the two projects, but I'll try to keep them separate for the time being. If you go on the first page, the spreadsheet, the last, the right side, fiscal year 1617, kind of breaks down the pavement to different kinds of treatments, because there's all kinds of different things that, you can do the roads, you can crack seal, you can cape seal, which we've done in a lot of neighborhoods that isn't, they aren't as bad but need something. Overlaying, milling overlaying, and the reclaim and overlay. Reclaim and overlay are the worst of the worst, but if you spend all your money on the worst of the worst, you, you won't keep ahead, so that's why you have to balance it with other treatments. I have the notes in the third column from the right, which kind of go over, the Cape Seal roads are listed under item two. It's basically the Cory Lane area, Damon Heights, Naomi and Wilbur Lanes, Filosi and Wagon Wheel off of Upper Patagansett and Nelson Drive, and then Village Drive and Village Court. Those are the areas that we're targeting right now for the Cape Seals. We're actually trying to line that up for July. On the, on the two-inch overlays, we're looking, got a lot of complaints at the Gurley Road area out over in the Golden Spur area. I'm not planning on doing that right away, because there's so much going on right now with, when I originally put this together, I didn't realize the state was going to like change the world over there.
Oh, my God.
Place the bridge and over, but I'm looking to do that in the spring of 2017. The milling overlay, I'm looking to milling overlay Society Road from 161 right in front of that Lilyby, Lilyby Haynes to Riverview. We have to do a little sidewalk work and handicap ramps, but that road takes a lot of traffic. It's starting to get pretty beaten on. It's, you know, Community Center, all the people, so that's, that's a pretty major one that we're looking to do this summer when buses aren't in season, so if, if this goes forward. And then the reclaim and overlay is, the $1,085,000 is lumping together the $900,000 and the $720,000. So the $900,000, the portion of the reclaim and overlay is Latimer Drive and Caverson Drive, going off 161 in Flanders Section of Town. We just did Monticello last year and a few other neighborhoods up there. This is going to be Latimer Drive and Caverson. Those roads, I believe, are almost 50 years old. I remember them when I was a kid up there, and they, I, they have very little to do, anything over the last 40, 50 years. I think it's about two inches of pavement. It's fallen apart. You can't put a service treatment, it'll fall apart in two years. So you have to grind, rip out all the curves, grind it all up, repave it, put the curves back, put the aprons back. So that's the $900,000, so I'll try to keep it, you know, keep it together with the $720, so that, that's what constitutes the 900. It's a very specific plan. We're already talking to contractors. Obviously, if this doesn't go forward, I'll have to put the stops on it, but we're trying to do this stuff in the next three, four months.
You have two different bonding resolutions, and we're keeping these budgets separate.
Yeah, I'm keeping the 900. I just explained the 900. I haven't talked about the Bush Hill yet.
So we're just talking the, 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 the $900,000, which we have traditionally and historically funded, so that, and, and we've learned over the years, those that have been here, that it's a whole lot cheaper to maintain roads and keep up with it than go and have to redo these roads. It's 13 times the cost by this standard. Joe, what does it cost? You, I know you have that figure. How much does it cost to maintain a mile of road by just general, regular maintenance and then if you have to rebuild it?
I don't always break it down by mile of road.
I know, but yeah, you have a.
But I have it by square foot. It's about $2.50 a square foot to reclaim a road. It's about 10 cents to, 10 cents to crack seal it. It's about a dollar to overlay it. So there's the interesting, actually, it's, it, the cost factor, there's a cost factor on your spreadsheet here. So for every $1 spent on crack seal, you're spending almost $13 on reclaiming. So, you know, we try to do the Cape Seal, it's about $4, $4, $4 opposed to $13 for reclaim. So I, I think we're gaining on some of the roads because of the town has invested in the $900,000 a year. I'm looking to get into the, the east side of Nyanic next fiscal year if I can, on the Grand Street and all that side, but, you know, we've done a lot of work in the Flanders area. We've been trying to spread it up. We did Grassy Hills here, we did Lover's Lane. If we can do these roads, and if we can get over the hump of Bush Hill, then our main areas are the downtown Nyanic and Saunders Point, and then we'll be gaining on some of the worst roads in town.
Great. So this is resolution, I believe. Move the following resolution. Resolve that the resolution entitled Resolution Making An Appropriation In The Amount Of $900,000 For The Rehabilitation Of Various Town Roads And Authorizing The Issuance Of $900,000 In Bonds Of The Town To Meet Said Appropriation Impending The Issuance Thereof, The Making Of Temporary Borrowings For Such Purpose, A Copy Which Is Attached Here To. It Is Hereby Adopted And Recommended For Approval By The Board Of Finance And The Legal Voters Of The Town At Town Meeting.
Second.
It's been seconded twice, but we'll only accept one. Any comments?
What is the length of the bond for these, you know?
Twenty years.
Is it a 20-year bond? And what's, what's the lifespan of a new road?
Thirty.
Thirty, good.
I know, he takes cues.
Saw that one coming, huh? Yeah. Enough, Steve. Anything else, Mr. Salona?
I'm good.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm prepared to vote for this, because after you presented us with the list of roads during the budget hearing, I went and drove on the roads. I was smart enough to take my husband's car and not drive mine.
Good.
Particularly, and I had heard from a couple of the neighbors in Bush Hill, that in particular, I think, if we, if we don't do it, it's, it's going to be beyond, beyond repair. They're going to be driving on a dirt road.
The plows will rip it up.
The plows are doing that, yeah.
So I'm prepared to vote for this.
This, this motion is just for the $900,000 that excludes the Bush Hill, but your comments are.
So it doesn't include Latimer?
Appropriate and accurate.
Latimer and Caverson.
Yep. Okay. I'll. Latimer and Caverson, I have a new driver up there, so you're going to. I'll call the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Joe, good work. I mean, you're, you're juggling every road in town, 110, 110 miles of road, and you're doing a great job keeping up with it.
Thank you.
And, and now for the Bush Hill neighborhood. I appreciate citizens coming out to speak and, and let us know firsthand what's going on up there, and we don't think you're being emotional or dramatic about it. We have driven the roads, we know neighbors and friends that live up there, and they're in tough shape as well. So your plan is to elaborate, a separate plan, because this neighborhood is in desperate need, but you can't obviously, if you do this neighborhood, then all these other roads that you've identified slip another year, and then we're moving down the chain of the cost of repairing these roads. So we have to get ahead, and we have to bite the bullet and spend some extra money this particular year.
I do have some statistics, really quick. It's in the back of your stuff that, there's actually 9,300 linear feet, so it's about a mile and three quarters of road up there. It's all 30 feet wide. So if we were to spend the $720,000 of the 900 on Bush Hill, then everyone else in town will be upset. And there's, there are 140 homes, I have it, 136 homes, so the 720, there is a list of, we have to remove all the curves, 16,000 linear feet of curving up there. Have to remove all the curving, fix the drainage tops, because it's the time to do it. I'm already talking to the water department, they got to do their work if, if there's any valve work, then we grind up the whole road. They grade it, roll it, and then they pave it for three and a half inches, and then we have to put the curving back, move behind it, and fix everyone's driveways in the way in 136 homes. So it's a, it's a huge task, but that's why the $720,000, it seems like a big number, but it's a huge, it's, it'd be the biggest undertaking the town has ever had in one project. That kind of paving job, it's that big.
When do, when would you plan to start this if it's approved?
The more, Bush Hill, I'm targeting, and I was telling the contractor, say, September.
And the approximate length of the job?
Five to six weeks. From beginning to end.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, have you, between the time you put this proposal together and given the changes in the oil prices and the costs, have you seen any change in what you anticipate spending on it?
We're, we're using state bid pricing on paving. We were very fortunate, because 95, you see all the 95 work is paving, that the contractor that paved, the way the state bid is, they bid every town in the state, and because people were competitive, they wanted 95, their numbers were $7 less a ton this year than we paid last year. So it's a great time, and it's Tilcon. it's Tilcon, everyone knows Tilcon.
So you, we get wrapped into that state bid?
Yeah, we use the state, the state bid, so it's, I mean, last year, we paid seventy-five dollars, ton sixty-six, so we have great numbers, and that's why, um, if, if we can do it-
So we haven't been-
This is a good time.
Heard at all, in fact, we're better off than if we'd done it last year.
We have very, very, we have very, very good pricing this year, locked in state bid pricing.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, what does two lifts mean? Two lifts of pavement?
You, you, you put, you pave the binder, two inches.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't put it down three and a half inches of pavement at once, it's just, it ju, it won't-
So you're doing two shots?
So you put down the binder, you put the whole binder, everyone drives on it, and then they come back and they pave it again, that's just the way you pave a road.
Didn't know, okay, thanks.
We did, we did that at, uh, even McCook's, the Buffalo Park on, two lifts.
Thanks.
Resolve that the resul, resolution entitled Resolution Making An Appropriation In The Amount Of Seven Hundred And Twenty Thousand Dollars For The Reconstruction Of Town Roads In The Bush Hill Neighborhood And Authorizing The Issuance Of Seven Hundred And Twenty Thousand Dollars In Bonds Of The Town To Meet Said Appropriations Impending The Issuance Thereof, The Making Of Temporary Borrowings For Such Purpose, A Copy Of Which Is Attached Hereto, Is Hereby Adopted And Recommended For Approval By The Board Of Finance And The Legal Voters Of The Town At Town Meeting.
Second. It's been seconded, any further comment, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? The next step for this and those other items, it goes to Board of Finance next week, and then it will go to public, uh, a, a town meeting thereafter. So, that's how the process works. Uh, three F, budget transfers. And there's several within the three F, there's A, B, and C, so, my book here, three A, so various transfers within departmental budgets have been necessary for various reasons, attaches the documentation for transfers made for a total amount of two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Information presented includes from account, the description of the blind item, and the to account, um, and these requests are forwarded to you in accordance with section six point three point four of the charter, this is what we do, so we'll need a motion to ratify the departmental changes, so you reviewed them.
I'll, uh, for budget transfers, within budget, move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars, processed for fiscal year end June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval. B, within week fifty-three payroll, move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, processed for fiscal year end June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, related to week fifty-three payroll, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval. C-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're just doing A right now.
Okay, you just, okay, I thought you were-
Um, sorry.
All right.
Yeah. So let's, let's just change your motion, just be that A.
I meant to end it just, uh, to, the, uh, two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars processed for fiscal year end June thirtieth, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Sorry, I heard you going, and I was like, wait a minute. So, we have that motion. We have that motion.
Second.
Second again.
It's been seconded. Comments, questions?
Hallie, you sound like you came in first on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
You see that crystal clear?